Just to re-download Zoom and open it. So just bear with us for about two minutes and then we'll start. Okay, it's two after seven. We will come to order. Jeremy, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Wenger.
Sharon.
Councilmember Richards.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Here.
Mayor Alfs.
Here. Okay. We'll start with with oral communications. Does anyone wish to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda?
If I may, Jeff, if you'd like to, for attendees, please raise your hand and then I will unmute you and you can address the council.
For those of you who may not have used Zoom before, to raise your hand, you should see at the bottom of the screen in Zoom, a button that says Participants. If you press that, you should, it should open a new window and on there, there should be a button that says Raise Your Hand.
I see Don has his hand up. No, he doesn't.
They may just be testing the button.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm gonna move on for now. If you do have a comment on something besides the agenda, let us know and we will, we'll get to it. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from tonight's consent agenda? I actually have a comment on items one and two. I guess I'll just pull them. So it's silly, but I kind of want to just acknowledge it, which is that the both, both minutes start off with the statement that we called the meeting to order and did the Pledge of Allegiance and we're not doing the Pledge of Allegiance. And I mean, I don't think we should, you know, it's kind of, doesn't make any sense to the Pledge of Allegiance under the circumstances. So I just wanted to have that stricken from both sets of minutes.
Well, would that change, Jeff, excuse me, recommend approval of the consent agenda?
Okay, hold on a second.
I can.
Okay. And Sharon, can you make a roll call vote?
Councilmember Wenger.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda is, is passed. That brings it to, sorry, I'm navigating as I go here. So on the regular agenda, I wanted to move a few things around just because we have some people who are live who might, I thought we could sort of move through a few things and get them, get them, get their part out of the way before we get to our sort of longer discussions. So the first item I would like to, with everyone's permission, would like to address would be item five, which would be the farmer's market update. If there's no objections, then Jeremy, do you want to start that item?
Thank you, Mayor Alfs, members of the council. We wanted to provide an update tonight from our not so new manager of the farmer's market, Niall Estep, took over about a year ago. We wanted to provide this update for two reasons. One, obviously, there's been some changes at the farmer's market the last couple of weeks and wanted to hear from Niall about what that experience has been like and then more broadly share how things have been in the last year. And this sets up a further conversation at the staff level to break forward an updated agreement. So with that, Niall, I'm going to unmute you. There you go.
Welcome, Niall.
Hi there, thank you, council. Yeah, so in these trying times, the farmers market has adapted, as you have all known. We appreciated being part of the community the last year. We've gotten to have great relationships with a lot of the customers and the members that come to the market every week. We've had some vendors go. Two vendors have left due to just kind of their own, one of them moved up to San Francisco and one, they closed their business, but we've had a couple adds. So, you know, I think our vendor numbers have stayed around the same. Prior to this, we were talking with Jeremy about doing some more events and kind of adding some aspects to the market. Obviously, those are kind of on hold. We were talking about the idea of doing a dinner in the park and having a couple more food trucks aspects and bringing some more seedings and those kinds of things. But as we had to adapt, I think those are on hold until we get past this. We really appreciate you supporting our vendors during this time. I know that a lot of the towns and cities have completely closed their farmer's markets and some of the associations are still staying open. But I think with our adjustments, we've made a safe environment for the community and as well as some of our vendors. Really appreciate it. We got a really nice note from one of our vendors, Tion, who is, does our, the bakery, Little Sky Bakery. I'll just read that note that she sent over. Having the Safe PV Market Program has really helped our small business during this difficult time. It has let us continue to provide bread to our customers in Portola Valley in a safe manner and it has helped sustain our livelihood. Little Sky Bakery and our customers really appreciate the program and the hope that it can be extended as long as the market is not open. And one of the aspects of the safe program, we've been trying to utilize all vendors that have been in our farmer's market for the last, you know, couple of years. And so they've been really grateful for the opportunity. So we've got a lot of feedback from that. And just a little quick statistics on what we've offered to the community so far. So in the three weeks we've been operational, we've sold over 1,500 bags, 300 pounds of grass-fed beef. We've had 160 donations, donation bags that have been purchased by the community, which I think is really awesome that, you know, as we're all stuck inside, the people that can kind of give back to the community in that way have been really outspoken about that. We've gotten over 70 positive thank you notes from our emails and after purchases. This week, every week we've sold more bags. This week, we've sold out with 560 bags. A couple of the notes that we've gotten have been really, really nice. One gentleman, his name, yeah, he, his neighbors picking up his bag and giving to him as he's self-isolating. And another woman, we delivered to her and got pretty emotional and was very thankful as she has no family members and she lives alone and has been scared to go outside. So able to provide this service is really awesome. So, yeah, so that's kind of a lot of information, but if you have any questions, you know, please, please let me know.
Well, if I could, Mayor Alfs, we want to thank Niall and his team for, you know, really stepping up and coming to us with the idea of creating the safe market and making sure that the vendors that we've all grown to know and love and love their products have an opportunity to continue to work. I think in particular, the donation aspect of the program has been really well received. And as you know, but for the people who are attending virtually, bags are donated by residents who purchase them to those students in the school district who don't live here. So that's been a fantastic aspect of this. A little later in my COVID update, we'll, I want to come back to the council and talk about next steps related to continuing the program. As you know, it's a three-week program, so tomorrow's the third of the three weeks. And you know, I'll share that as part of the broader budget discussion, if that's okay with you. But wanted just to give this opportunity to, to thank Niall and if there's any questions or comments from the council about what we're doing, both short-term and long-term, I'm sure he'd appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you both. I've gotten a lot of great feedback about the farmer's market itself and also the donations people are making has been, it's been really amazing to hear. And I know that a lot of people really appreciate both those things. So I want to thank Niall for stepping up and doing this. I also want to thank Jeremy and the staff for making it happen on our end. It's been, I think it's been a rousing success. Do any of the council members have questions for Niall or Jeremy? Craig, go ahead, and I think I saw Ann's hand up, maybe?
Yeah, I don't have a question, just really a comment. I reiterate what Jeff said. I think, you know, the, what I'd call the routine, old-school farmer's market from back in the day was tremendously successful and popular. And I think Niall's done a great job in maintaining that and enhancing it even. And the safe program has been just spectacularly successful. You know, there, we have regular calls with all the elected officials in the county where we get updated, updates from the county manager and other, other state officials and so on. And people in other towns have been trying to figure out how to get their farmer's markets to work. So we've been trying to pass on how successful our program is and hopefully, you know, other towns will start picking up the model because I think it is a great way for people to safely support the merchants who come to the markets and get fresh veggies and other, other stuff that they can get and have the thing be sustainable through this period when a lot of people are going to be really struggling. So when it comes up later, I'm hopefully going to be very supportive. It's not gonna, it's not costing us a lot of money. It's very successful. So I think it would be good to keep it going. But, but Niall, thank you for all the work you've been doing.
And Ann, go ahead.
I'm gonna back it up just a little bit because I wasn't expecting to make comments, but my question for you, Niall, is just how well are your, all of the different groups of vendors that you work with, how well are they all doing? Do you have a sense of whether you think they'll all be able to continue indefinitely at this point or, I mean, you get, what's your read of that? I'd be interested to hear how they're doing.
Yeah, so that's a good question. It really varies with which vendors. So for example, our meat vendors can't keep meat on the shelf. They're just filling orders because they're doing pre-orders and people are really stocking up on those items. More vendors that are kind of, you could say, accessory items, cookies, and those are the ones that are struggling. So that was one of the strategies of not, some farmer's markets have opened it up to, you can purchase it individually from the vendors and all the people are just going to, you know, your meats and things that you can hold on to for a long time, whereas the other ones are struggling. So in this model where we kind of use a little from every vendor, we're really able to kind of share the wealth and purchasing power. So for our vendors, you know, they, they seem like they're, they're going to make it through it, but unfortunately, with some of our vendors at other markets, it's, they've had to lay off some people and it's unfortunate, but it's kind of the circumstances that, that we're all in.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Okay. And Jeremy, this is, we're not taking action, right? So this is just kind of an update and we'll be looking for a renewed agreement in the not too distant future?
Correct. That's, this was informational only. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Niall. I'm gonna move on since we're not taking an action and we can have comment when this comes back to us. So in that case, we'll move on to item. Sorry, item. I want to do item, item seven next, which is the adoption of the ordinance number 12 from the Woodside Fire Protection District. Jeremy, are you doing this one as well?
Yeah, I'll start it off and then Don Bullard, who's the fire marshal, has joined us virtually, so he'll take it up from there. As this council knows and saw late last year, last meeting in December, the council has provided a preview of the update to the Woodside Fire Protection District Fire Code. We adopt the code on a regular basis. We call it ratification in this case. And there are local amendments that are made to the code per the needs of the district. So the Woodside Fire Protection District puts those together. We had planned to bring this back to you about a month ago, but with everything that was happening, we did put it off. Don Bullard, as I said, is on the call and Don, you are unmuted. And if you wanted to share any highlights from the, from the code, please.
Well, I think everybody has previewed it. I think the, the only delay was that there was one question from one of the council members and I'm happy to answer that question if it's still an issue. Otherwise, there hasn't been any changes. It still stands as it was.
One comment I'd like to make is I know that our team, the planning department along with Woodside Planning and then the district themselves worked on the landscaping portions of the amendments here. So that's got our stamp on it. Thanks.
Oh, for you, for the, in regards to the COVID-19 or just the, the landscaping as far as the zero to five-foot zone?
Zero to five-foot zone.
Okay, okay, got it. Yeah, all right.
Okay. Sorry, I was having some, my internet connection got really strange there for a second. Sorry, there was one that, one question. Craig, you had a question at one point about this. Did you want to ask right now or?
Yeah, sure. So really, my question, it's sort of indirectly about this, this new fire code, but it, it originated from the report that was written about the Stanford Wedge Project by Denise Aneah and which mentioned something about proximity of buildings to each other and how close buildings can be to each other, which I couldn't really find directly in our existing fire code. And I just wanted to be sure to, that I understood clearly what this new fire code allows in terms of grouping of buildings on a lot and proximity to setbacks if you have buildings on adjacent lots. We have in our code fairly extensive detailing of what we expect setbacks to be. And I wanted to be sure that adoption of this new fire code was not going to change that and potentially render properties or existing building envelopes in town on properties effectively no longer buildable because the fire code wouldn't allow buildings to be sighted in locations that were too close to other existing buildings. And that the fire code didn't disallow other, other things that we have in our building code such as requirements for covered parking spaces and that if there were limitations on buildings being proximate to each other, you couldn't have, say, a garage too close to the house or a carport too close to the house or two carports too close to each other. And I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity from the fire department on whether any of those rules were changing and whether in fact there are restrictions on buildings being too close to each other if they're separate buildings, separate structures.
No, you are correct that that is strictly a building, you know, the setbacks have to do with the building code and that's, that's in your lane in planning. And the fire code does not. What we can do is we can make recommendations based on what we know as far as buildings igniting and being too close for direct flame contact, but we have no authority to make those statements as to how far buildings can be separated from each other. That's a building code issue.
So would it then be typical if we, if we had a project, let's say there's a hypothetical project, we're on a residential lot, one house is proposed with a new carport that's detached from the house that's, say, 10 feet away from the house? Would that be something that the fire department would write a comment similar to the one that came to the Stanford Wedge property saying that structures shouldn't be that close together because there's no way of preventing fire?
We can't make that. There's nothing in the code that gives us the authority to make that call. It would be a recommendation to the homeowner based on what the materials were being used, just like when they state that a fence shouldn't be attached to a house. There should be a break in the fence because it'll lead the fire to the house. If you want to protect the structure, you don't want to have a flammable combustible building built right next to the house because it's going to bring the fire to the house. So.
You don't want it to, you don't want it connected, but you also don't want it detached?
You, you don't want it, in the, in the, in the sense of a fence, you don't want it connected because you're going to be bringing fire from the oncoming wildfires, you're going to bring it right to the house, right? It's going to be connected to the house. So you want there to be some separation. As far as a carport being built next to a house, no, we do not have any authority to say how, how far or how close that can be to the house. That's the building department. And also, also with the setbacks.
Thank you. That clarifies my concern.
Okay.
Other questions from the council for, for Don? Okay. I can take public comment on this if you have a. Sorry, I'm having a problem with my. Which one is display off?
Do you want it on there?
Sir, no. I apologize, I'm having a little issue here. All right. Jeremy, do we have any hands up for this one?
No, no hands are up.
Okay. In that case, we can come back for discussion among the council. Anyone? Ann, do you want to lead off?
Have to remember to unmute. Yeah, I mean, I think Craig asked a good question, just to clarify in case there's been any confusion on the issues and the relationship of the issues. And certainly, we support all of the fire district's efforts in keeping their code current and obviously employing best practices. So I'm positive and supportive of us moving forward with, with passing this tonight.
Okay, thank you. John, any comments?
No comments. I think we've covered most of the issues last time around and I think it's still a good way to go.
Greg, any comments?
No, thank you. I think all my, my questions have been cleared up and I'm very supportive now.
Mary Ann?
I support all these recommendations. I think they're very reasonable.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement there. Then I can take a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, moved by Richard, seconded by Hughes. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wenger.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we will take our town manager's report on updating on COVID-19, the town response.
Thank you, Mayor Alfs, members of the council. So I wanted to start actually with a few resources at the county and I'm going to share my screen to show you those. These are websites. Just give me a moment as I pull that up. So this is the county's website, for those who can see, smc.gov.org. And on here are a variety of resources. I wanted to point out the San Mateo County Strong Program that is funding San Mateo County small businesses and nonprofits and individuals and families. So anyone can donate to that. The county is also looking for medical supplies. If you go below, there's questions about the order and then a variety of links related to the order and COVID generally. So highly recommend this site. It's a site that I go to on a regular basis. The county's health site also has information and one item that I wanted to show, and I'll show people how to get to this. If you go to smchealth.org, there's a coronavirus webpage. Under data is what has been called the dashboard, takes a second to load. And the dashboard has all of the county data on, on COVID. It's not provided on a city-by-city basis and we don't get that information either. So this is the data that's available to us and it's updated on a daily basis. So for those who are interested in this information, this is available as well. There's also hospital data. So as you can see on the number of ICU beds available, surge beds, ventilators, other resources. So highly recommend this is a data set as well. Again, we utilize it regularly. A few council members have asked about a tool called Zone Haven. For those of you who remember, Zone Haven is a company that is actually going to be helping us with evacuation routes in planning. They've modified their tool to accept information on resources available for residents for COVID. So for those not on the, not on video, it's publicly accessible site, smco.community.zonehaven.com. You can see the entire county is in lockdown and each of these districts are actually the evacuation districts, there's six in Portola Valley. We have provided Zone Haven with our information, but I want to go to actually a location where you can see it in action. So here in Menlo Park, if you lived in this district, you can see on the right, there's community resources. You can click there if you want to see what food is open and then there's a list of those restaurants. As I said, our information was sent to them today. So you will shortly be able to do that within each of the zoned areas in Portola Valley. There's only a handful of businesses that are open, obviously, right now, but it can also send you to businesses a little farther out of town. Remember, it's only essential travel only. So to show that in action, clicking in the Westridge one, again, it's not fully updated, but it shows, in this case, food that's available, restaurants and like home and auto. So I think it's a good tool for those who want to see what's actually available to them. And again, we'll be using the Zone Haven tool to help with our evacuation planning efforts. And when we do an evacuation drill in town, hopefully later this year, we'll be utilizing this tool among others. Next, I wanted to move to our site. Our site for COVID items, it's in the red bar on the top, click here. And it takes you to our revamped page that has all of our latest information. It starts with the messages from the mayor, which are listed here, and then below, summary of the town's actions, resources and other information that we think is pretty crucial. So this is always a great place to go if you're looking for the most up-to-date information. And when we do make updates or have new things to share, they typically get in the mayor's message that day as well. So I wanted people to see that. I'm going to stop sharing right now. So the, what I, what I want to share today from a town perspective are a few things. Again, I wanted to focus on the communications. We've moved to a model where communications is through the mayor's message unless there's something very urgent that we need to put out. So those are still coming daily. The, and we don't plan to change that anytime soon until the, the COVID crisis is over. The staff is doing well. They have adjusted to working from home. And in some cases, we've moved from COVID-related activities to what I would call regular work. I think that's particularly true in two departments, in the planning and building department and in the public works department. In planning, the planning team has started to transition to some of doing work on permits that were already in-house. We're still not, we're still not accepting applications, but we're able to do some of that work now, now that we've moved from the set of emergency requests for. the set of emergency requests for construction projects. There are 11, uh, projects that have requested continued construction through the, uh, during the order, prohibition order. Some of those are already completed, some will continue. These are life safety issues, erosion control issues, kitchens that are operating, things of that nature. There's no roof. So we've accepted those. We're not anticipating anymore right now. We, we shall see. But that's allowed the planning staff to, to move to other items. The, uh, public works team is, uh, to the extent that they can, when we're not addressing COVID items, working on regular right-of-way issues, you may have seen them doing some vegetation management work on, on parts of the right-of-way, related to, uh, wildfire management. And certainly, um, maintaining those facilities that are being used by residents, particularly, um, town center, which continues to be a place where people come. And, uh, I can report that we're seeing, um, much better examples of social distancing overall. Across the board, we've had to take some measures that we, um, were not, uh, particularly comfortable with candidly, but, uh, we figured it was the best way to go because of the way the facility was being used. We had our staff take down our basketball hoops and the tennis court nets because people were jumping fences. We had somebody jump the fence today to play. So, um, the public work staff continues to monitor those, um, those activities. Even myself and some of the other managers have moved to some work and in my, um, my town manager report, I'll, I'll talk about some of the non-COVID items that, uh, we've been working on. Wanted to talk a bit about, uh, the budget and where we are, uh, fiscally. The finance team has, uh, put together some initial numbers that will, um, I'm going to just very, very high level here, talk about them, that we're going to discuss with our, um, subcommittee of, uh, Craig and Anne, who will assist us with, um, with this. So, um, you know, at this point, we, we've made some assumptions. Uh, the first set of assumptions are that, uh, we may not see much in the way of sales tax for the rest of the fiscal year. That's probably conservative, but I think it's fair for the purposes of this discussion. We're also, uh, for the, for the purposes of the exercise, not anticipating a variety of planning and building related, uh, fees, permits and the, and, and the like. So, um, amongst others, um, yeah, we're not, we're not anticipating a lot of home sales right now. So real property is going to fall. Um, we're not going to be going out a little bit later this fiscal year and asking people to renew their business license at this point. I think we're going to extend it, um, for a number of months into the next fiscal year and then collect later. Certainly seen hits on lease income, rental income, sports, um, leagues. So, like, with all those numbers, the number that I've been using internally is something like a $300,000 hit if all of those assumptions occur. That was what we, we had that in our range of assumptions. So it wasn't surprising when we got down to the work of it. But it's, it's, it's substantial. Um, and if you recall, our, our general fund budget is a hundred thousand dollars difference between, um, revenue and expenditures. So, um, there are going to be opportunities within that budget, um, to make up the shortfall. Within the general fund, um, those include some salary savings for a position we have not filled. They include actually, we realize a lot more, uh, money in the ERAF fund, that's the education fund, than we anticipated, about $60,000. There's a couple, um, consultant prod, um, fee, uh, excuse me, consultants that we're not going out for right now, general fund. Excuse me, general plan update and the user fee study, it's about $70,000. And, uh, our interest was doing fairly well, was doing better than budgeted until now. So, um, more to come on that one. So, in reality, it's not going to be a $300,000 hit. It's going to be something less than that. That's, I think, the high end of where we could be. It's also worth noting that there's expenditures within the capital improvement program that won't move forward. Those include the road project that the council talked about at the last meeting. We've got some work in our storm drains. It's about $50,000 we wouldn't be doing. It remains to be seen whether we'll be doing any, um, work related to the pedestrian safety study. So there's additional funds that, um, could be moved to help, but there will be, um, there will be, uh, a hit here. Related to, uh, fiscal matters, um, I participated and I, I think, I know at least one council member participated in the call today with the Calpers. Um, and, uh, I, I was pleasantly surprised that the, um, the, the hit they're taking from the COVID crisis is not as dramatic as I anticipated. It was, uh, about 4% down from where, uh, where they, where they thought they were going to be, which is pretty incredible given, um, what's happened to the markets. They believe that that's because of the diversification of their portfolio. Um, so we saw some of that data, but it was, that was encouraging to hear that, um, it's not quite as bad as, as, uh, we thought. And Craig, and I don't know if Anne, you were on that too. I don't know if either of you had anything to say about it.
Yeah, so across their whole portfolio, they're down about 4% as of the end of March. Um, and the markets have recovered a little bit since then, at least the stock market has. But luckily, you know, Calpers being conservative, relatively conservative, they have a lot invested in bonds as well and those have gone up. You know, I, I don't think they're fully out of the water yet. We still have to see what the economy does through the rest of the year as, you know, some of the, the kind of shock impact part maybe is over, but there's a, going to be a long tail on this of cash flow issues and potential defaults on loans and businesses going under and things like that. So, you know, 4% for now is what I would say and it may go, it may get better, it may get worse. They also talked a little bit about when the town might expect to see an impact from that in terms of how it affects our, the actuarial calculation of the top-up payments that we have to make for our unfunded liability. And, uh, they, they've come up with a formula where essentially, uh, the shortfall that might come out from this would be passed on to the towns two years from now, so it wouldn't come in till 2022. Um, and they, they've got a curve where they kind of smooth it in over time. So they don't hit you with all of it in year one. Over the first five years, they kind of ramp it up slowly and then it kind of caps out. And for 15 years after that, they, they kind of can keep trying to catch up. So they're, they're spreading it out over a long time period. It's delayed for two years and they put a ramp period in there. We were already very healthily funded compared to a lot of other towns, um, against our Calpers liability. So, um, we will take a hit. It looks like, um, the, the, what I call the underfundedness, they had a bunch of, uh, projections there for, for people who are kind of funded in the 70% range. We're up in the 90s, I think, or we're at the last, last time I looked at it. But it looks like you lose somewhere between 4 and 6% of where you were. So if we were at 95, we're probably at about 90 now. So it's not a, not an impossible hit that we're probably going to take. And Calpers is, is working hard to kind of smooth that out as much as possible for us. So we're not going to get a giant hit two years from now when they, they send us our first bill for the shortfall. So overall, I was relatively pleasantly surprised, um, how well they've been managing the portfolio, particularly since 2007, 2008, when they took a, a much bigger hit. Um, I think they've been a lot smarter since then about planning for, um, you know, situations just like this where one part or another of the, of the market kind of falls apart and to, um, preserve as much as they can the value of the portfolio through that across the total portfolio. So, um, you know, it's still on 355 billion in assets. 4% is nothing to laugh at. It's a lot. It's 14, 15 billion dollars, um, across the whole system. But, um, our share of that should be hopefully a relatively manageable now.
You know, one other, um, element of the fiscal situation for us is obviously we've, we've made some emergency expenditures. Those, um, have included the signage that we have now in town for, uh, Windy Hill. You know, that's running us, uh, uh, $2,000 a month a sign. So that can add up pretty quickly. Um, we're, Howard and I are working on actually, um, replacing those signs with more locally placed signs in the Willowbrook area. We think that that makes a little more sense at this point, uh, related to parking. There's $6,000, um, a week for the farmer's market support. And we've made a number of purchases to support working from home, computers and the like. Um, so it's not an insubstantial amount of money. Our, we're in good shape. Um, we have a very healthy reserve. Uh, we, um, can make the kinds of changes that, um, you know, are possible to, to keep it together, but we're going to present this to the subcommittee in the next little bit to get their feedback. Um, but I just wanted to start off with saying that, um, we're, we're certainly in, 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 in a, in an enviable position as it relates to other cities. Other cities are looking at enormous hits to their transient occupancy taxes, hotel taxes. There are cities that depend heavily on sales tax and they're saying, they're seeing huge hits. So there's decisions that they need to make related to, um, positions, personnel and the like, and that's not something we're going to have to deal with. So I'm, I, I'm, I'm really optimistic from, from that front, but some decisions will be made. So I'm looking forward to engaging with the subcommittee on, on what those decisions should be moving forward. I want to talk a little bit about reopening, um, which might sound a little optimistic and ambitious early on, but you have to start planning for this. It's not as simple as unlocking the door and, uh, starting business all over again. Uh, I would anticipate there to be quite a lot of, um, energy that has pent up over time to, uh, rent our facilities, to get back in the planning and building docket, to do the kinds of things that people normally do when they work with the town. And, um, we would not be able to manage that if we did not come up with a way to phase in certain activities. So we've started to have a conversation, um, about that. And I've started to talk to my colleagues in other cities to hear from them and what that may look like. Some of the ideas are, are by necessity pretty creative and a little different than, uh, you know, what we, how we normally do business. I'll give you an example. I can't imagine that we just start accepting all manner of planning permits day one. We have to come up with a system for that. So it might be based on the type of permit. It may, we might have to do alphabetical. We, we're thinking about those types of ideas to, to phase it in over a period of time. That way the staff isn't overwhelmed and people, um, aren't feeling as though that we're not meeting their needs. So really, um, want a thoughtful approach to that. I'm looking at early May is a possibility. We'll see if the state and the counties continue to have the shelter in place. But we want to plan for that and if we need to push it off a couple of weeks, we're happy to do that. Um, excuse me, a few other items, um, just related to what's going on in town. Uh, our first virtual, um, committee meeting is tomorrow, uh, cultural arts committee. Other committees are looking to start meeting again. Uh, the, the wildfire prep committee, um, is, their chair is asked to set up a meeting. So I'm going to send some information out tomorrow to set up a time for that. So, um, we're hoping other, um, the other committees will, uh, take advantage of this. Uh, as you know, our EOC is open. Um, I just wanted to state that explicitly. That's important because if, um, there's, um, recovery dollars related to the FEMA, um, aspect of this, we're eligible for that. We've got a close relationship with the director of the Office of Emergency Services at the county and he's been very helpful in helping us, um, work through this. It's, this is a different kind of emergency. What we would normally do in an earthquake and fire doesn't really apply. And having an EOC open for eight weeks or nine weeks is fairly unprecedented. You just wouldn't do that. So, um, he's been, his name's Kevin Rose. He's been really helpful and with, with that. We, um, put some signage up on Upper Alpine, um, on the turnouts to discourage parking. We were seeing people park up there that was already, uh, prohibited in our code. But people were, were using it, I think, for bicycling and also for access to the Alpine Trail at the top of, uh, Alpine Road. So that's been put out. We've, um, kept, uh, the barricades on Willowbrook. I'm, and I've been speaking with a number of residents who live in that area and I'm not sure that they're, um, effective anymore. That they're, they probably are just pushing the parking down a couple hundred feet. But certainly the traffic has fallen considerably and the parking has fallen considerably. Coal Mine Ridge is not, uh, a regional destination. Um, and I think people taking the, um, not in the same way Windy Hill is. And people are taking the, the shelter, uh, the, the five-mile radius, uh, for exercise seriously, it seems. So we are looking at that to see whether we need to continue to do that. That, I think the council also knows, um, we, uh, worked with our friends at Alpine Inn to put some, um, parking restrictions in place because people were parking in that lot to access the Arasidera Preserve. At its highest, we had 38, 40 cars in the lot one day, um, which is pretty unprecedented for recreational use. So, uh, I want to, uh, thank Lori and Deke over at Alpine Inn for working with us on that. And, um, and what I've heard from Lori today, that it's not been an issue. So that's been good. Um, the final thing I wanted to provide an update on, uh, and then go to a couple of questions that I have, is around our virtual parks and rec page. So we're planning to launch this very quickly. As you saw in the mayor's message yesterday, we're calling all artists and musicians and other content providers to give us what they have so we can host it on our site. Um, we're also working to have a little staff corner where each member of the team will contribute something around a virtual tour or, um, uh, some music that they like. Or, uh, I, I, uh, today sent over a five-minute mindfulness exercise that I found useful during all of this. And then other content that we pull off of, uh, pull off of YouTube. Um, so we're excited about that. We're also looking forward to potential content from the school district, from, uh, perhaps Palo Alto University. They've indicated that they've got some, um, content around, um, mental health and the library. So we're pretty thrilled that that's, uh, coming to fruition. I want to thank Taylor and Brandy on the staff for putting that together. Um, and before I jump to the questions, I just wanted to say that, uh, we, uh, the census is happening right now. And, uh, in San Mateo County, we're in fifth place for returns on the census. So we were at second the first couple of days. We've, we're at fifth. We should keep it up. Um, but that's a pretty, uh, pretty strong testament to the, to, I think, residents, um, the citizens participating in, in that process. So that's my update. But did, uh, Mayor, did you want to, um, take questions on any of that before I ask questions? Cause I, I wanted to get the council's feedback on farmer's market and the Willowbrook issue.
Yeah. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Jeremy on this first part? Craig?
I have a question, Jeremy. I think, I think, um, we, we had reached out to all the businesses in town to let them know a little bit about the options that have been made available at the federal level for, but, you know, through the $2 trillion, uh, package that they pass and, and other, uh, benefits that businesses in town might be eligible for. Have you heard, heard anything further from anybody on, on that and how our businesses are doing?
Jeremy?
I'm sorry, you broke up there for about five seconds. I didn't hear the end of that. Apologize.
All right. Have you had any feedback from any of them on whether they've been able to apply for things or how, how the businesses have been holding up?
Uh, I, I can give a little bit of an update, but I'd actually turn to, um, to Anne, who's been engaging on this issue in the last week or so with, with businesses. Did you want to add anything there and then I can follow up with you, Anne, or follow on, with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think from a general standpoint, Craig, it's, there's a lot of frustration with the ability to get through to any of the lenders. And I think that the, the feedback I've gotten is that people are working really hard on it. Excuse me. And they're very aware of the options, which is great. So all the information that's been made available by SAMCDA and through the state, through the county, our, our website has been super helpful. And now it's really penetrating what has become, obviously, an incredibly backlog system. Uh, you know, as you may have heard on today's meeting with Jackie, she was, Jackie Spear reported that there's likely to be another $2 trillion added to the CARE Act by the end of the week. That's the expectation.
One, one more trillion, but.
Okay, maybe.
Who's counting?
Well, I'll look at my notes and you can look at yours, but at any rate, it's a significant amount on the bottom line. As much of it is designated to the small business side. So, I think that the, the goal here is, is to facilitate that process as quickly as they can. And a lot of the issues there are resident with the commercial banks.
Yeah, I mean, amongst the people I've talked to, I've definitely heard that there are a lot of issues applying for the loans. My, my question was really, are, are the, are the businesses in town even aware? Because most of the, most of the people I've been talking to are, you know, tech savvy startup companies and things like that where they're, they know about these things because their investors are telling them. There's a lot of discussion amongst each other. I just wanted to make sure that all of our I just wanted to make sure that all of our businesses, which are generally not of that type in Portola Valley, are aware of the options that are out there. So even if it's hard to apply, that they they know it is there and eventually they might be able to get through and and get some get something. Sounds like they do, so.
Yeah, I I Anne and I have been working on this together and and the the information that's been sent out has been well received. And I, you know, to what Anne was saying, I think that there's some challenges with some of this. The rollout for the SBA stuff wasn't particularly great. But but I think it's our sense that the businesses in town that we've been communicating with are very well aware of of options that are available now. And Anne and I have talked about, you know, further informational updates to them as as more information comes out. I think Anne's going to have some more to say about that. Did you want to do that now, Anne, or did you?
Well, I think, you know, I think I was probably going to talk more about it when we started into the discussion of the emergency ordinance. So I think I think it's better better placed there, Jeremy, would be my recommendation.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions? Or comments? So the the two areas I was looking for for some feedback from the council, some some direction that can be useful here. So one is just with Willowbrook. You know, my my sense at this point is that, as I said, I think we're just sort of pushing the problem down the street a little bit. I I don't know that we need to continue to have a lot of the barricades out there right now. The signage that Howard and I have, the Howard's order, too large, like the road construction signs that you would see, and we put it either end of Willowbrook that just says there's no parking here. We think that'd be sufficient for the regional, any regional traffic that we get, local people know their way around and and the like. But I wanted to see if people were okay with us starting to to pull back some of those barricades. We can use them other places, honestly. But if you think there's a different approach, I'd love to hear it.
Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeremy, just to ask a question about what you just said, is you're thinking that you're going to try and stop parking on all of Willowbrook? To put it at the end of the street so that even the places where people are parking now? In theory, if they were reading the signs and obeying the signs, they wouldn't park on Willowbrook at all?
So the order that that I issued currently doesn't allow parking on Willowbrook associated with Windy Hill. So it's really the whole street, but we've not been able to physically mark the street in any way that makes sense. So we just did the first couple hundred feet. And that that helped a little bit. I mean, it certainly helps as it relates to bicyclists coming down Alpine. That turn from Alpine onto Willowbrook can be a little hairy. So I think creating some space there was useful. The the signs are really intended to, you know, help us with the regional traffic, which is which is lessened. We don't want to, you know, people aren't supposed to be getting in their car for recreation in town. So we want to support that part of the shelter in place. But we know people are going to, you know, continue to drive up there. So I'm not I'm not necessarily looking to keep everybody off of Willowbrook who's looking for a recreational opportunity. But it's also not, I don't, I just don't think it's particularly useful at this point. Again, I think we're just pushing the problem down the street a little bit. Any other thoughts from the council?
Any other comments on that one?
Yeah. Time and I I think Jeremy's right, it's moving down the street. It does seem like it's lessened up quite a bit. If we're still expecting people to go up and park on Willowbrook to hike up on the on the Coal Mine Ridge Trail those trails, which I think is what's happening now, as long as that's okay. It just seems that signs are potentially that these signs are potentially ticketable, right? And if if they're, but it's going to be possible to tell if people are jumping the fence and going up onto Windy Hill or if they're actually going up on from out of town or if they're from in town and going up onto Coal Mine Ridge. So I I I think Jeremy's right that it's shifted quite a bit and and been reduced a lot by probably mostly by putting up the signs that saying Windy Hills closed outside in the beginning entries to town. I I don't, I kind of agree. I don't think that moving it down the street further is really makes much sense. So probably taking those barricades down that are up at the on the hill makes sense and people will probably park there. But it's I think it's a little better than having them parked down in front of all the houses further down the street.
We did have a creative approach. One resident took one of the no parking signs and put it on their trash can at one point. Away, so it was it was pretty good. Okay, well, no other comments. I think I got a sense of where the council is. You know, really, the important thing is to emphasize that Windy Hill continues to be closed and that there isn't parking for Windy Hill in that area. You know, the people, again, you know, should not be traveling in their car to go to any recreational facility right now. We understand that that's occurring. It's hard to police that, but the real issue was just the traffic from Windy Hill. So we'll 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 make some accommodations for that. The other issue is the farmer's market. The theoretically, we're in a position now to have the farmer's market continue for, you know, three to four weeks under the current order. Maybe longer. The the cost has is about 6,000, just over $6,000 a week to support the infrastructure. The program has been fairly successful in that, you know, the first week we did have some bags that weren't purchased, but those bags were actually donated at no cost to the town to other organizations. The last two weeks totally sold out plus. So I I don't I don't have any concern that the program will continue to be successful. I I suspect there are people outside of town even buying. They did get some press and I've heard other communities talk about it as as an example. But it's not an insubstantial cost. So I I wanted to hear from the council on what approach you'd like to take. We can accommodate this through. You know, money's in in our reserve account. So that that in and of itself isn't the issue. But I wanted to hear from you. Thanks.
I, you know, I'll just start by saying, you know, I, there are definitely people from outside of town that are buying some of the bags. Ideally, I mean, it's it's a fair amount of money, but I I just people are really happy about this. I mean, I think it's it's just in terms of just just the the feel good factor for the community and and just just our, you know, the public relations we're getting, I think it's a great, I mean, I still think it's a good thing. So I personally, I think we should keep it. I think we should continue it. So that's my two cents, but if anyone else wants to weigh in on it. Craig, go ahead.
Um, yeah, when we were initially discussing this program, initially, the the subsidy that they were looking for was going to be a lot higher with a a lower price per bag of groceries. And they set the price to where I think it's a it's a, you know, reasonable price for you. You get pretty good value for money for the bags. I don't think anybody's feeling like they're getting ripped off. One, the the only question I'd have really about, I I completely agree with you in terms of keeping it going, we absolutely should. I think it's a it's a great thing for the community. People are feeling good about it. They're enjoying being able to support the the farmer's market vendors. And as we've seen, they're they're also using it as a mechanism to help feed people who might otherwise not be able to to get food through this period. So the donation bags are also a big part of why I think it's 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 good to keep it going. That said, I don't know if, you know, if we increase the bag, the price of each of the bags of groceries by five bucks each, we're selling 500 in the week, then that's extra $2,500 we wouldn't have to subsidize. So I I don't know if there's room and and I don't know if if Nile is still on, no, it looks like he dropped off. If if there might be room to, you know, increase the price per bag just a little bit. But if not, I, you know, I I don't it it it's still going to be something that we need to subsidize, and I think that's appropriate. It's just a question of whether we could pass some of that on, especially if we think that there are people coming from out of town. I don't begrudge people doing that. I think it's it's good for them, just as good for our residents. But if we can you know, add a couple more bucks to the bags, that would lower the cost of the town. And it seems like they're selling out. So, you know, if 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 it were hard to sell the bags at the current price, I wouldn't necessarily say that. But I I don't know that a $5 extra charge per bag, which is only about a 10% increase on the $40 bag, is going to materially impact the demand.
Yeah. Mary Ann, go ahead.
I agree with Craig. I think we should increase the bag price a little bit to take a little pressure off of us. I I don't think our residents will find it hard to spend another $5 per bag. And of course, it's a very popular program. The donation bags are wonderful and it should continue. But perhaps at a little less of a price to us.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, as I understand it, we started off with whatever the number was to start, and that has been increased slightly, is that right? The number of bags sold there? Do they have the, the best, the question is, do they have the capacity to increase the number of bags sold? Since there seems to be a pretty good demand. And in that case, is do they have the capacity and is the current logistical setup? Would they be able to handle that without increasing up the cost to us? Just a more of a question for, I guess, probably for Nile.
I I I don't, I understand that that any increase in bags, well, they can they can accommodate some increase in bags. A lot of it has to do with what the vendors can provide, too. So and that just depends per vendor. I haven't had that conversation specifically with Nile about increasing the number of bags. Nile's pretty good about telling Brandy or me, you know, whether or not something like that is useful or not. And I I haven't gotten that message in the last couple of weeks, that there's substantially more people who aren't getting bags that want them. So I don't get that sense right now, John. But I think they can accommodate it. They've got a pretty, some of you have gone down and gotten bags yourselves, and it's a pretty good operation.
And I'll add my my vote to maintain it, maintain our our participation and perhaps a little increase in the price would be okay. It's not a huge amount.
Yeah, I agree. Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, and I agree with everything that's been said, and I think the one other, I do think we should increase the prices a bit. And $5 doesn't sound unreasonable. The other thing that's occurred to me is, as we've all been participating in all these conference calls, and it's clear that the need for food is rising and it will continue to rise. So there's a part of this that I think if we could even tie in a donation to Second Harvest, perhaps as people are ordering this or do it as a separate thing, because I I think we're doing a great job with Farmer's Market. It is achieving all the things we talked about or you've all mentioned. But I also want to think about what else we could be doing in this area, because I see it as being one of the biggest challenges, not only for some of our residents, but certainly regionally, I think people here would be potentially very generous as well if they were aware of how much that need is increasing. And I think the longer we go, the more that's going to increase. So that would be my only other addition to the
I like that suggestion, too.
And if I can, Mayor, that one of the items that came up for a conversation in the mayor's virtual copy last week was, you know, the opportunity for local restaurants to donate to in this case, it was the local hospitals. There's a variety, but the places donated. When I reached out to Stanford, their hospital, they're they're not even taking donations. They're getting overwhelmed, which is good. This is a great thing right now. That could change fairly quickly. I've got a message into Lucille Packer through my contact at Stanford to see if that there's something interesting there, too. And I'm very happy to reach out to Second Harvest to see if they're, what what their capacity is to take increased donations. But we we hear anecdotally that the nonprofits are getting supported pretty well with with this kind of stuff.
Okay, I see one hand up among the attendees. David Cardinal, do you have a comment you want to make?
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My other question is, I love the fact that Farmer's Market is great, and I love they're putting, we're putting money into it. But are we doing the same for our local businesses that are hurting really badly and actually, to some extent, compete with the farmer's market? I just want to make sure we're taking care of our own businesses the same way.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we, I I wouldn't say that we've been I'm going to mute you, Dave, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't been subsidizing them. You know, we've been trying to encourage people to order locally. Yeah, I I I would do that again. I mean, beyond that, in terms of supporting them with with, you know, directly, we haven't done that yet. I mean, with the farmer's market, I guess, you know, we sort of, we have these this arrangement and we wanted to keep the vendors up, you know, just because we know they're going to, at some point, we we want them to to be around when we can open the actual farmer's market again. That was kind of the thinking behind this particular thing. Obviously, we want our our restaurants and and Robert's to stay in business, too. So for the moment, we've just been encouraging people to 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 go there and shop or to buy, take, get takeout from them. But it's a good point.
Yeah, I'd like just like to make sure we think about that. Because I'm much more of a fan of our local businesses than, like, I love the farmer's market, but that's not that's not our core in my mind.
Yeah. No, I I like both. Anne, go ahead. Anne was going to say something.
Yeah, Dave, to your point, we we have started some reach out moves to some of the local merchants in a more direct way. And I'm aware now that there are at least two in one of the in up, you know, that are part of the the complex with the hardware store, Jellic property that have GoFundMe campaigns associated with them. So there are some individual efforts in addition to all of the financing packages that the the groups are pursuing. But I think that some of those have been started at a local level. And I think one of the goals that we have going forward is to be able to aggregate the information we have about that and what we might all do and to take in some new ideas of what we might do to support the local businesses. So that's definitely on our radar.
That's great, although if we're using taxpayer dollars for one and not the other, I I don't I I'm not sure I'm a fan of that.
That's a fair point.
And I I should note, I mean, we do pay, it's obviously at a different price point. We we do pay to have the farmer's market. It's not a lot of year to have it managed. The the cost that is going into it is associated with, you know, having the infrastructure to actually have the bags in place. We're not buying the bags. So we do financially support the farmer's market outside of COVID. Again, different price point, different amount, but we do do that.
I just, I would rather support our local, it's my tax dollars, I would start with our local businesses. And when they're fine, I would put the leftovers into the farmer's market or whatever. That's just my vote with my my tax dollars, that's all.
No, understood. Thank you, David, yeah. Craig, go ahead.
Um, I I don't know if we need to act or have a motion on this, but my suggestion would be to to have Jeremy go and work out with Nile, whether there is room for, you know, a per bag price increase and or increasing the number of bags, if that would make the economics better. But if if we have to continue to subsidize at the level we have been for the last three weeks, that that we should do that, but hopefully we can reduce it by collecting more from from the actual sale of the bags.
Yeah, I I know we're not taking an action. This was sort of just our feedback to him. And I I think we all, I think we're all on the same page on that.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay. That was that was your, that's it for the COVID update, Jeremy?
Yes, that's my update. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, we will move on to item six, which is a recommendation from the town attorney of the consideration of an urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on evictions for nonpayment of rent by small business commercial tenants. Kara, are you going to take the lead on this?
Kara, are you there?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Kara, you're unmuted.
Okay. Good evening. Well, it's it's good to see you in this remote setting, and I like all of
Well, it's, it's good to see you in this remote setting. And I like all of the backgrounds. It's fun to see that. So this commercial eviction ordinance was brought forward as a complement to the commercial tenant eviction ordinance that the county just passed on Tuesday. The county ordinance only applies to unincorporated county, unlike the residential eviction moratorium ordinance, which applies to both unincorporated and incorporated portions of the county. So in deciding whether to adopt a countywide ordinance pertaining to commercial tenants and protections for, for evictions for commercial tenants, the county felt that there were too many variables within the different cities within the county. And so they really left the decision on whether to adopt an ordinance to the individual cities and, you know, instructed the individual cities to make the policy decision on what types of commercial tenants needed protection, if any, within the particular jurisdiction. So the, the county provide its ordinance as a template. And so we had a, a city attorney meeting with all of the city attorneys within the county. And we discussed with county council the, the use of the ordinance. And it looks like there are several cities that are interested in pursuing an ordinance like this. And so we thought it would be appropriate to, to bring it to the council, so that all of the cities can, can participate in this protection ordinance. So I wanted to just summarize the ordinance that, that we've attached to the agenda. The, as I mentioned, it's very, the construct is very similar to the rental eviction protection ordinance. It requires a landlord to serve a written notice on the tenant and notifying the tenant of the eviction moratorium ordinance in effect within the, the town. If the tenant responds within 14 days of receiving that notice, that they will have trouble paying the full rental amount, then the landlord is prevented from serving an eviction notice for a period of time. Now, the, the period of time is current, the county's ordinance expires on May 31st. So this is really a very temporary ordinance. So the, it's up to, it's up to, of course, the council, but, but the county took the position that they wanted to just have an ordinance in effect for a couple of months, primarily to give the, the option for the, for commercial businesses who are struggling financially to apply for the stimulus package and under the CARES Act. So if the tenant is served with this notice, they have a approximate two-month period where they do not, the landlord cannot serve an eviction notice. There's some protection there. And the ordinance also specifies that the rent obligation does not go away. It is just deferred. And under the county's ordinance, it's deferred for six months following the termination of the emergency. Of course, that's, you know, that's, that's, we would advise that tenants try to pay at least partial rent payments or try to pay some of the months, because at the end of the six-month period, that's a large hit to take. And the, the rent obligation under this ordinance is not waived. It's, it's, it's just deferred. So if the, if the, if the landlord does proceed with an eviction action despite the tenant taking advantage of the ordinance and providing notice that they have a COVID-related situation where, that, that prevents them from paying rent, then the tenant has the ability to assert an affirmative defense in an unlawful detainer action. So in essence, this ordinance is really self-enforcing. The, it's up to the tenant to assert this affirmative defense in an unlawful detainer action. The tenant also has the ability to bring an action against the landlord for damages for breaching this ordinance. And also the ordinance, violation of the ordinance is also a municipal, a violation of, of the municipal code as well. So those are the summary of the, that's the summary of the remedies and the enforcement provision. Let's see here. We have established the, one, one further note in this discussion is that just a couple of days ago, the Judicial Council also adopted a 11 emergency orders. And one of those orders pertain to unlawful detainer actions. And so at a state level, all unlawful detainer actions by order of the Judicial Council will actually be suspended for a period of 90 days. And so it's, it's possible that even if this ordinance were not in effect, if a landlord were to proceed with an unlawful detainer action based on non-payment of rent, it wouldn't be able to bring that action because the, the state has, has discontinued those, those, the issuance of summons in unlawful detainer actions for a period of 90 days. However, the, we believe that there still is a reason for adopting this ordinance, because this ordinance really protects the tenant during the notice period. While when a landlord serves the notice for non-payment of rent, that's when this ordinance kicks in and provides the protection, as opposed to at the time that the unlawful detainer action is filed. So with that, we have provided you with a copy of the ordinance. As I said, it's an emergency ordinance. It would go into effect immediately if you adopt it. The one policy decision that, that we have for you is what, what type of business in terms of, generally, cities are, are defining protected business as a small business. In San Mateo County, the, the business, a small business was defined as $2.5 million in, in gross annual revenues. Whereas in the city of San Mateo, that adopted a similar ordinance, they defined a small business as $25 million in annual gross revenue. So those are the two bookends, probably, in terms of how to define a, a business. I'm assuming that, that you would want to apply this to small businesses. That's the goal, is to protect, you know, smaller businesses that are having cash flow problems during, during this emergency. But again, that, that certainly is a policy call for the council. With that, I will turn it over to you for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Kara. I'm going to ask Ann to weigh in on this. I should point out, Ann's been working with some of our small businesses.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't hear you, Mayor.
What about now? Hello?
I can hear you.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to let Ann start. Ann chime in on this next. I should point out that Ann's been working with our small businesses quite a bit. So Ann, why don't you, why don't you start, start us off on this?
I'll add a little bit of color and sort of fill in from a less, less legal side, but just...
Yes, it's me. I, I'm not able to hear. Let me try my headphones.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me, Kara?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there we go. So what I just said is that I'm going to probably add a little bit of color that's non-legal in sort of perspective as to why we started down the path of looking at this seriously. And
Thank you.
It really relates to the fact that I think there is a shared community concern for all of our small tenants. And the fact that we know we have a different community. It's not a big community. You can't compare Portola Valley rents to Palo Alto rents. And there, we're serving a much smaller population, but we obviously have a number of beloved institutions and small, not even institutions, but small retail tenants principally that serve the community and are much beloved by the community. And I think in an effort to make sure that this does, they don't become the victims of what we know is going to be a substantial economic hit to almost all of us in one fashion or another, is to be able to see ways in which we might at least be able to assist them over what we hope is not a longer term issue, but clearly is going to have a substantial impact on them. So that was the background for why the discussions began. And so as we moved quickly, and there were things happening, obviously, at the county and at the state, as others were recognizing the impact on their communities of what was happening to their tenants, we looked at the different options. And quite honestly, I think that in almost all cases, one would advise all landlords and all tenants to be working on this together as a first stop, not worrying about a judicial or legislative solution, but to really be realistic about sitting down together, having an open and honest dialogue about what the tenant can do and how that can work for the landlord and really making, having those very difficult but clear discussions. And I would say the good news from my conversations with the majority of all of our landlords in town is that has started, and in many cases, it's already well underway, if not nearly complete. So I've reached out and spoken to all of the major landlords, and I know we have one with us tonight who will be speaking probably to this issue shortly. And I would say overall, I was very pleased that even the largest, and that would include somebody who's not even in town, but down in Ladera, is working with their, all of their tenants to come up with solutions. And they're varying all over the board in terms of the kinds of relief they're potentially providing to those tenants, depending on their business, how much they're able to operate or not in this environment. So lots of factors, lots of individual factors. And we're certainly not trying to legislate those discussions, but it makes sense for everybody involved to encourage them so that this ordinance really wouldn't be applicable. They wouldn't have tenants who weren't able, through their agreement with their landlord, to be comfortable on both sides of this, with it moving forward in a way that can work and that, you know, could potentially provide a solution outside of an ordinance such as this. And it's really in the absence of that cooperation that this would be the backstop. If there are situations where there just isn't an ability to reach that agreement, to at least provide that initial level of protection to those tenants, to, to have one other course of action. And I heard consistently in talking to both, to, to a number of tenants as well in these areas, that they're all trying to permeate that care package and SBA loans, and that I'm sure that they will all, those that have been involved to date, and even probably more coming forward, will hopefully be successful to be able to bridge that, because they really are designed to work together. So as I think Kara mentioned, the two pieces of legislation are really supposed to be a hand in glove kind of solution to at least one of the ways of solving what we're all facing. And it's a new, we're all in unexplored territory, but I think there are some creative solutions, again, designed to benefit the community and to benefit all sides of the community. So that's the backdrop. And there's, again, any number of questions you probably have about it, and I'm happy to answer any specifically. But certainly, my experience has been a positive one in that the vast majority of the landlord tenants have had and are having very involved conversations about ways they can work together. And I heard all positive comments, not all, but I heard principally positive comments coming back as a result of that. So that is good news for the community. And I think if we go much, too much further down the road, we, you know, there may be new ways that we'll talk about this. But tonight's discussion really has to do with if there are situations where we can't, there can't be an agreement that's reached between them now, do we want to provide the backstop to protect the tenants that may not be able to make it through this?
Thank you, Ann. Craig, do you want to weigh in on this, too?
Um, yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions for Kara primarily. The first question I had was this, the period, it says during the period of local emergency. Is that local emergency, the town of Portola Valley declared emergency, the county emergency, or the state emergency, or the federal emergency? How local is local?
It would be the Portola Valley declared emergency.
Okay, could we clarify that in the ordinance?
Yes.
Be useful.
That's a good point.
The second question I had is in section, I'm looking at the number 2C, that while we, while we essentially allow six months delay in the payment of these rents, actually six months beyond the end of the emergency, which could last for a while, we say that they cannot charge or collect a late fee. Are we legally allowed to do that? Or does that constitute a taking? In other words, if, if the landlord and the tenant have a contract that says that late rent would incur some charge or interest payment, are we allowed to just invalidate portions of a contract like that and take real value from the landlords?
Right. So...
The, the suspension, I understand, but the, specifically the not allowing to charge a late fee.
Right. So two points. Number one, it, the county proposed a six-month deferral period. That, of course, is a policy decision. And the San Mateo County, or excuse me, city of San Mateo, I believe, is also doing a six-month deferral. However, in the rental moratorium ordinances, there was more diversity in terms of the deferral period. Some cities were adopting a 90-day deferral, others 20. So, you know, that's certainly a policy call for, for you all. With respect to the late fees, across the board, the ordinances have incorporated that, that waiver, because if, if a tenant is, is struggling financially and having to pay a sum at the end, and then also have to pay late fees on top of that lump sum, you know, it really defeats the purpose of the ordinance. And whether the, the payment of, of those late fees would constitute a taking, it's, it's very unlikely that, you know, certainly somebody could assert a taking in connection with these types of ordinances. Other, another claim that has been asserted is impairment of contract. Again, there's a, it's, courts, you know, look at the whole context of these, of these, of the situation where, in which these ordinances were adopted. And we don't think that it's likely that a court would find the waiver of a late fee in this context to be either a taking or a temporary, a temporary taking or an impairment of contract.
Okay. And then my last question is, you've got the fill-in-the-blank section on what constitutes a small business that would get this relief from paying rent. Do we, have, have any other towns or jurisdictions that you've seen looked at the size of the landlord? In other words, I mean, in Portola Valley, we, all of our businesses are small businesses. And many of our landlords are small landlords. And while the businesses have a facility through the federal SBA loan payment or payroll protection program for specifically covering their rent payments, landlords do not have any protection for coverage or payment in any way for their, whatever, whatever payments they may have to make on money that they borrowed for, against those properties. So my, my concern is that while we're trying to protect one category of small businesses, which are retail businesses, we're going, we're going to be squishing a whole other set of small businesses, which are small landlords, who will not be able to afford to have all of their tenants say, I'm not paying you any rent for the next eight to hour of a long month. And that the, the loss of cash flow means they won't be able to service their loans and they have no other facility for being able to go and get, go and get money, unlike the retail businesses which have, you know, currently 350 billion. And it sounds like maybe on Friday, another 250 or so billion dollars coming specifically for them to be able to pay their rents. So I, I, I'm just concerned about the, the aspect of this that essentially, you know, in this, in this balance between the landlords and small businesses, I, I, I totally get that we don't want the businesses to go under. I also don't want to see the landlords go under and have, you know, banks owning all of the commercial properties in Portola Valley and all of these tenants now have banks as landlords. That would be an even worse situation. I think that the, as, as Ann said, from talking to the businesses and the tenants and the, and the landlords, I think mostly they have a pretty good relationship in Portola Valley because they all are fairly small scale and they know each other, you know, they, a lot of the businesses have been around a long time, as have the landlords. And so I, I wouldn't want to upset either side of that card. And I'm a little bit afraid that the ordinance has drafted where it's, it's really putting the thumb on one side of that equation in favor of the renters without really considering the impacts on the, on the landlords.
Yeah. So, and thank you for that comment. So the, one of the aspects that we, we did incorporate into this ordinance to attempt to address that issue, it doesn't, you know, address it completely, but we did include in section two G, a hardship waiver. And so that is designed for landlords who perhaps this is their only income producing asset. And if all of their tenants ask for this relief, it could put them in, in finance, it would cause financial hardship to them as well. And so we do have an administrative review process in place for that circumstance. Also, of course, there is, you know, several different foreclosure protection programs that, you know, the, the federal government has, has started. There was some foreclosure protection announced also by the Judicial Council, but it's a, it's a tough issue.
Commercial foreclosures or residential? I see a lot of residential. I haven't seen anything about commercial, but I may have just missed it.
Right. You know what? I, I, I didn't distinguish the two in my head, so I can look that up. Yeah. The Judicial Council just came up with a, with a, it's similar to the eviction protection, the unlawful detainer waiver. There's also a foreclosure judicial foreclosure waiver, but it may just apply to residential. I, I'm not certain.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Okay.
Okay. Ann, you wanted to comment again?
Yes, I do. I mean, Craig, I absolutely appreciate and also am concerned about the issues you talked about, which is one of the reasons that we, in advance of this meeting tonight and of Cara working with us to draft the ordinance based on what's been happening in the county and the state and likely to be adopted by other municipalities, is to really see what to get an idea of the lay of the land here in terms of how our largest landlords are feeling about it. And if they're feeling as though it, it will is a doable procedure, I mean, meaning what, whether they're concerned about it or not concerned about it. And quite frankly, I would say that most of them were not concerned about it because they're far along in their discussions with their tenants relative to what they're going to provide for them. So they're, I think, being very savvy in the sense of moving forward to say, we know this is coming, let's get ahead of it, let's work with our tenants. And this ordinance wouldn't apply to them because they're trying to avoid having any of their tenants needing to file for bankruptcy. Now that I'm not sure is universal throughout. And, you know, throughout this delay of our landscape here. So that being the case, the one idea that certainly has occurred to me, and we can take public input before we would make any decision, but consider that one of the thoughts I've had about it is that perhaps we, if there are those who have not been enacted negotiations with their tenants to date, that we give them another week to do that and to really understand and make sure that they've all exhausted efforts to stay outside of a legislative solution like this. And that if we're still not seeing progress from the perspective of those having proceeded, that then we could revisit that to see if which, where we would fall on it in that, in that case, because frankly, I'm pretty convinced it should be workable, but it'll take some work on some landlord's parts to really be comfortable with that and to make it happen, frankly, to make it happen. And, and to make sure that they are working with their tenants, because then I think we'd have a lot higher degree of confidence that, that our local tenants will be able to stay in place and they'll be able to work with their landlord and there'll be concessions made on both sides in order to get everybody through as a group and as a community. So keep that in mind as, as we're thinking about this and public comment comes in and, and we start to discuss it, but that has been one of the things that I've been mulling over in my mind to suggest that might be a, a solution that may in fact keep us from not having to adopt a legislative solution, but obviously being ready to if we, if we think we do.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in, I know that there's a few resources that are potentially available to landlords and I was just a couple that I wanted to share. The first is the US small, the SBA. There's an Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program that could apply to landlords. They should consider applying for something of that ilk. And I know that some banks of the, let's see here, Wells Fargo US Bank, Citibank, JP Morgan Chase, and a number of California state chartered banks and credit unions have agreed to a 90 day forbearance of mortgage payments for smaller property owners impacted by COVID-19. So there are opportunities for landlords as well. I would certainly encourage anyone, a landlord could, could be part of a small business and they should be looking at the SBA and the other resources that are out there.
Are there other questions for Cara or Jeremy or Ann right now? Oh, Cara, go ahead.
Yes. So I, I just looked up the Judicial Council's emergency rule number two, staying judicial foreclosures, and it applies across the board to both residential and commercial.
Thank you. Other questions?
I'm sorry, I just have one follow up. It prevents those foreclosures from moving ahead now, but if somebody were to breach, say, the terms of a mortgage now, while the courts are closed to these actions, they could file that action once the courts open again, could they not?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to some public comment then. Jeremy, we, we had several letters. Do you want to, are there any you want to read into the record or summarize for us?
I, none that I would read specifically, but I'll just, I'll summarize them. We received approximately 15 emails from residents today. All were supportive of a commercial eviction moratorium. We received, and I think the council received as well, one letter from Stanley Lowe, who's a landlord who's on the call. And if it's okay with you, Jeff, what I'll do is I'll unmute Stanley because I think he wanted to make some comments.
Yeah, Stanley, if you want to make your, our first public comment, go ahead.
So Stanley, there you are. I hear you.
Hi, thanks for your effort. So I just want to share my experience in Portola Valley. Basically, you're absolutely right, this ordinance to stop all the, for the eviction for the commercial people, providing you have such shopping center like Hillsdale, have a Crystal Spring. These people's family owned it for years. They don't owe anything. And they can replace those, those tenants in a matter of weeks. In Portola Valley, the tenants in upper hand because we even scared them to leave because very hard to replace the tenant. And if the tenant left, in my experience, sometime taking me half a year to one year to find a new tenant because right now, because the internet, all the retail's dead. And then also very competitive off of all the restaurants, salon, chiropractic. So for all these years, sometime I even pretending I don't see the increase on their contract and let them go. My accountant says, Stanley, what you doing? I say, look, you know, if they don't make money, they cannot make it. I'm out it. So I, let, let's just don't send a notice. So a few people doing good, then we send a notice. So I already really work like we're a partner, we're families. And so I think the town of Portola Valley at this time to adopt this emergency ordinance doesn't really apply this time because all the landlord, I don't think any landlord at this time have the guts to send the eviction because they would be stupid to do that because they're not going to find a replacement for a long, long time. So I'm, I own property in Burnington. It's a hot, hot street, no more. Like my face, you know, the North Face just left. It's vacant. You can see how many building I have there. It's totally vacant. Shoe store just bankrupted. And so right now, nobody landlord, especially a small landlord like us have to have ever can, you know, intention to evict any of my tenants. All my tenant there, most of them more than 10 years. And I hardly, hardly, hardly give them any trouble. Sometimes they just argue about, you know, triple net, argue about in, increased rent. We just let it go for a while, even now. And they all know that. So my, I have like almost $5 million loan against it. And what's the end result for my return? I'm no return. So maybe I made a mistake to borrow enough property. However, it's not going to easy to sell because based, based on the cap rate, today probably going to worth less than what I paid for. So we're all in a very, very difficult position. And some consultant just made a comment, oh, all the bank easy to give you the loan as a landlord. The first thing the bank would turn down a loan because you're, you're self-employed, you're a Realtor, you're real estate investment in a bad market. And I already tried. So it's, I mean, upfront, very front of the battlefield of the real estate market. And, you know, I always told all my staff, if the tenant doesn't do good, and then we don't do good. So we are partners. So I think that the town at this moment to set up this emergency moratorium, you know, what's the end result? Number one, used to be we're in good relationship. Now they say, Stanley, I'm not going to pay you. I'm protected by law. So, okay, I forced not to get anything. They said, show me your financial statement. Come on, a lot of these people pay me cash. So you know, I know that they don't report tax. And if they don't report tax, I report it. But how can they show me a good financial statement? But I know all these years because my space, they bought the houses, they raised the kids with college. They have beautiful car driving. From where? The money from where? Because for my low rent, I already contribute a great thing for the, for the, for, for Portola Valley. I'm a taxpayer. I think all the consultants should weigh the both side equally, especially who's doing better in the community right now, the landlord or tenant. I'm charging probably 30, 40% compared to what Ladera is charging. One time, somebody called me even laughed at me, why, why, why you're so cheap? And just the reason I keep all the tenants, I know, I know I cannot replace them easily. So I don't want to argue with the tenant or their financial statement. I don't want to go through their books. I don't want a deposition of their, their bank account. And all I, interesting, if so far I just tell you after this, as today, I already got a 60% my payment. And there's a 40% and they're going to sit down with me, fine, we work it out. At least I can use some of my, my money to pay the bank to, for this period. But look, let's face it, this talking about two months, the most. This country cannot lock down for three, five, for three months or six months, cannot, there's no way. All the businesses are going to be bankrupt. The, the country going to be in the totally, it, it, it's a finish. So you know, we know that. So why should we at this moment to put such a great relationship between the landlord and the tenant? All the town will put this emergency to help all the tenant not to pay. And then eventually, you know what? After six months, can they pay me? No. Because they are such a debt. Then I still have to serve them. You, normally I'm very stable now. Finally, I have to broke the whole town, that broke the whole shopping mall, become vacant ghost town. Because after certain eviction, they're not going to pay me. So I think at this time, these people should use some of the saving to take care of us, even if they have enough money to pay me. They don't, we'll work it out. I don't think a town should involve any emergency ordinance at this moment. So that's all my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. Appreciate you weighing in on this and contacting us.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public comment on, on this item? I don't see any hands up, but Jeremy, do you see any?
No, I don't see any hands up.
Okay. In that case, I'll bring it back to the council. Ann, do you want to just start off with your comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I think as I said earlier, what based on Mr. Lowe's comments right now, I think that the one thing I didn't hear, and this isn't going to be a dialogue between me and Stanley or this council, I think, and Stanley, but I do think that it's going to be important for the town to make sure that if we don't adopt this ordinance this evening, that there is progress being made to ensure that our tenants, all of our local tenants have the ability to move forward and to continue to do the best they can in this environment. And that they are working together in a positive way with their landlord to solve this. And I mean now, not tomorrow, not next week, now. It's the time, you know, most have already done it. And if it hasn't happened, then it needs to happen starting tomorrow. And so I'm very committed to that principle because if it, if the relationships are such that they can't be, that they are not able to really bridge the gaps, whatever they may be, then those protections don't exist necessarily for everyone. And I'm willing to potentially say, let's not adopt it this evening. But revisit it by next week and week from this, from tonight. And if through the conversations we're having, obviously with the tenants and we can, we know who they are and how to speak with them, et cetera. And the landlords, obviously, I'm not at all ignoring them. And I'm not putting us in the position of getting in the middle of those conversations, but just being able to affirm that they have produced the desired results so that an ordinance wouldn't be required because I think in most cases it's not. But it, it may be in some others. So that would be my recommendation, I think, tonight. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you, Ann. I see that David Cardinal has his hand up. David, go ahead. And if you want to comment, why don't you go ahead and do it now?
Thanks. And I, I get Mr. Lowe's point of view, I think, but on the one hand, he's saying that we don't need the ordinance because everything is fine. And on the other hand, he's protesting about the ordinance because he's saying everything's not fine. So I would love to hear more about the real data. We don't have like a million businesses in retail space in the town. We have like less than 20, I think, and maybe less than 10 landlords. I, I'm not I'm not sure, but it's not a huge number. So I love our businesses and I would like to make sure we do what we can to make sure they stay in business. And if they can't pay their rent for a while, I, that's a tough situation all around. But anything we can do to help out with that, I think would be good.
Okay, thank you for that comment. And Craig, did you want to say something? Do you want to just go next?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, Anne, I like your, your concept of maybe, you know, pushing this off for a week or so. So the, the, the stick is out there or we're threatening to brandish the stick, but not actually putting it in place yet. I, because I do, I do worry that if we pass this ordinance, those conversations that you're suggesting, that I think, you know, many of which have already occurred, as you would expect between landlords and tenants in the current environment. Passing this ordinance might actually act to cut off those conversations. Because the tenant is just going to say, I'm not going to pay you rent for eight months. I don't have to. Rather than try and reach some accommodation where they say, well, I can't pay my full rent, but I can give you 60% or something and, you know, and trying to, and, and when my SBA loan comes through, then I can go back up to 100 or whatever it is, rather than right now, you know, the easiest path for, for a business owner who's a renter would be to say, well, look, I've got the SBA loan. That might come in in a couple of months, once the feds get their act together. In the meantime, if I can cut my rent payment, I will. And if the government's going to, if that is the town of Portola Valley government is going to say, hey, look, if I'm impacted by COVID-19, which there's no business that's not impacted by COVID-19, I don't have to pay rent for six months, plus whatever the term of the emergency is. That's the easiest cost savings that that business could possibly have. And it, so it may act to actually short circuit and can eliminate those, those discussions for the landlords and the tenants to work things out. And in my experience, discussions between tenants and landlords are a lot easier and easier to work out compromises than discussions between landlords and bankers. Bankers will tell you, hey, you signed the loan, these are the terms. You're in violation of covenants two, three, and four, pay me or I'm taking your property. And I, I, I would rather have the conversations happen between the small number of tenants and the small number of landlords that we have in town who know each other, have been working together for a long time, built relationships, who trust each other to some degree, without having to, you know, without putting a big gun on the table for one of them to try and grab. I, I think those conversations will go a lot more smoothly if we let them figure it out amongst themselves, if they can. I don't disagree with you that if they can't, we, we may need to, to do something about it. But I'm not, I, I don't see the imminent emergency that somebody is going to file an eviction tomorrow, especially since the courts are closed and so they can't. And so I'd, I'd rather give them a chance to work it out between them without sticking our thumb on one side of the scale. And, and I agree with you, if they can do that and, you know, immediately starting tomorrow morning, if they haven't started those conversations already, they should. But it, this seems like a very blunt tool, which may have unintended consequences if we, if we act on it right now.
Okay, thanks, Craig. John, go ahead, won't you?
Yeah, I, a lot of interesting points being made. I think the interest, broader interest of the community is to protect these, our small businesses as much as possible. I think that clear, it was pretty clear from all the comments that we got in over the last few days. And of course, partly because people have a relationship with those folks and not with the landlords themselves. I find it a little hard to, to imagine that people would not pay rent, thinking that it would be to their advantage to hold it off and then have to bail lump sum in six months. But I, I could see how someone with a, a good knowledge of how to, how the financial system works and actually manages to, to land one of these, what seem to be very elusive loans at this point, could make it work out. I do like Anne's description of the whole setup as a, as a bit of a backstop for the worst case scenario. And I, I think people like Stanley are clearly trying to work with their, with their tenants to work things out. And I think that's probably in our small town, that's probably going to be the most likely result, likely outcome. But I would tend to want to put something in place. And maybe the week delay makes a lot of sense to give those discussions some more chance to pan out. But I, I think in general, I'm in favor of moving ahead at some point, depending on the outcome of those talks.
Okay. Mary Ann, won't you go ahead?
I think what we all want to do is keep everybody or make everybody as whole as we possibly can. And there's clearly misery on all sides. I think Anne's idea to, let's give another week to see if landlords can work things out with tenants is a pretty easy and safe way to go. But like John, I would like to move forward with this eviction moratorium ordinance if we're feeling like some of our small businesses are not as protected as we'd like them to be. But I could, I could vote for waiting a week.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, two weeks ago, when the county was putting together its, its eviction moratorium for residential properties, the mayors and the county council had a call. And the, the, the big question came up was this question we're dealing with right now, which is, we can sort of protect, we can protect tenants from landlords, but we can't really protect landlords from banks. And so that was sort of the, I don't know, the asymmetry of the situation. I agree, I, you know, we much, the preferred solution would be if we can, if our businesses and our landlords can work this out directly without us being involved. But I also, yeah, I want to be prepared for that worst case if we, if we have to do something. Because, you know, I mean, we've clearly, you know, we got 15 letters from people supporting the idea of protecting our local businesses. I'd like to do what we can to protect them. Craig, have, do you want to comment again? Yeah, I would just reiterate that our landlords are small businesses. And I think that's, that's an issue that people overlook, right? I mean, these are, especially for some of our smaller properties in town, these are people who live in town, own these properties, rent them out to single tenants. You know, they, they borrowed against them potentially. It, it's just, why would we protect retail businesses at the expense of a different category of business? I, I, you know, we, we meet, as you say, we meet the retail people every day when we go to those businesses. The landlords are a critical part of the infrastructure of the town as well. And, you know, chopping their legs off when they don't have funding sources to go to, where, you know, if we give it a week, maybe the SBA loans will start unblocking and people will start being able to actually get those, those facilities. The emergency program that Jeremy talked about, it caps out at $10,000, which isn't going to make your mortgage payment, or, you know, maybe for a month, but not for two. The, the business loans that will cover your rent go up to $10 million, which no renter in Portola Valley is paying $10 million a year in rent. So I, I, I fully appreciate that we want to protect the small businesses that are operating, you know, retail, the renters in town. But I'm very, very concerned, much more concerned frankly, about the landlords in particular. Because, you know, as has been pointed out by, by Mr. Lowe, but I've, I've, I've seen it myself as a renter in Portola Valley. It is very hard to become a commercial tenant in Portola Valley because you have to prove to the town that your business is for the benefit of the residents of Portola Valley. There's a big hurdle for a landlord to fill a vacancy here. And so they already have a, a big burden for getting tenants in, which is also a big incentive for them to not have to evict those tenants and try and find somebody else to replace them. And if those, if the, if the tenants go under, they'll have a vacancy that they need to fill. And in the meantime, you know, they won't be getting any rent anyway. So they'd rather get some rent than no rent. Or if they're, if the business really can't pay, pay rent, then they'll have to work it out anyway. So I, I just, I, I, I don't want to say we want to work to save our small businesses and not consider all of our small businesses. Some categories of businesses do not have retail outlets where we see them every day, but that doesn't mean that they're not important small businesses in our town.
Anne and Mary Ann have their hands up. Anne, go ahead, do you want to respond?
And I, I would just add that I want to make sure that I give the context that I, I think we're actually in good shape. And particularly in some of your concerns, Craig, having talked to two of the major landowners in town who are landlords, and they were incredibly positive in the sense, positive as much as any of us can be in this environment. But they were definitely optimistic about their ability to work really closely with their tenants to try and solve this. And we're talking about the types of concessions they're already offering. So it, from that perspective, it was very positive because that's what we want. That's what we need to have. And so I think that it's actually not going to be a lot of extra effort to wait that week. And it's advisable to do it so that if we come through it and are able to say, we know for, you know, we've confirmed that these discussions have moved forward, all of the tenants, including the landlords. I mean, everybody's sacrificing, so it's coming on both sides, there's no question. But I think that everybody will have, I'd have a much better time recommending that, no, we probably don't need the ordinance. And, but if, if we're not able to do that, because it's still, there's still some wild cards out there, then I think it's a good backstop potentially. But, but you should know that a lot of the, the people you were just talking about have come forward to say that they've had very positive experiences. And they don't anticipate having any kind of, they're working closely with their tenants. So I think that's really positive.
Okay, Mary Ann, go ahead.
I think Anne just answered my question. I just wanted to know, are there other landlords who are as troubled by this as Mr. Lowe? I guess that's to Anne.
I think you can hear me now, yeah. Not that I'm aware of, there's one I haven't yet spoken to. But by virtue of not having heard from them today, because they received the same email as the others did, I will reach out to them as well, again, just to confirm and really make sure that we cover all the bases. Because the good news is we don't have a lot of, surprisingly, a lot of our properties that you think might be leased are actually, you know, owner occupied. So we have a fair number of owner occupied, given we have a relatively small retail corridor. And that, that's a different scenario. And, you know, they're, they're in the category of business owners, period. So, so I think, I think actually that, you know, this is a great potential way to get through this time period. And, you know, again, hard to say whether we'll be having this conversation a week from now or not, or what we will be discussing when we have the conversation. But I am actually optimistic that, that we may not have to assume. But that's assuming some different things happen than, than currently are happening.
Okay, so I, I think the consensus we have is that we can, we could table this for a week with the understanding that we, I mean, we would
I have a technical question about that, which is, we're not scheduled to meet next week. Would we have an emergency meeting for next week to reconsider this or push it two weeks?
Jeremy, we were talking about maybe temporarily moving to a weekly meeting, so.
Yeah, um, one of the things that I was going to spin out of this, but I'll bring it up. I know that one council member indicated some interest in having weekly meetings for this month. And the meetings we'd be adding wouldn't necessarily have regular items associated with them. They would have a COVID update and an opportunity for the council to talk about issues. But this certainly would be something that could be scheduled a week from now. Well, I, for what it's worth, I certainly support that. I think it's, I think it's important that the council continue to meet on our, on a more frequent basis during all this, even if it's, even if the meetings are shorter, it's still an opportunity to discuss pressing issues.
Sorry, I hadn't heard about that, that's why.
Yeah, that was going to be a next, going up on our next item. So that was what we had in mind, is that we might start for, for the month or so, we, we would do this on every week, bring things up as they needed to, just given, we're probably going to have a lot of things to just touch base on, if not, if not vote on. Anne, did you have your hand back up, or was that from last time?
No, that's actually back up, because I wanted to just add to what Jeremy said. Because I think, I, I think it's a good idea, particularly since I'm going to try and shade towards the optimistic that we may have some opening reopening discussions to, to start having. Because I think, again, our planning on that's going to be pretty critical.
I, I
Even if it's a month out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So again, I think we have a, I think, I think we're all okay with putting this off for a week or so and just, just monitoring developments with the, with the landlords and tenants and, and bringing it back up next week as needed. Do I need a motion for that, or can we just, can we just sort of wrap up with, without action?
I would move that we
Just take your direction.
Next week.
Okay, I've got a motion. Okay, and, and, and the second thing, Sharon, can you take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Wangert.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Als.
Hi, okay, we'll come back to this. That brings us to item nine, no, sorry, eight. Again, apologies for the, for skipping around tonight. Item eight was the public comment policy. Jeremy, did you want to start on this?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Als, members of the council. Um, the staff put together this public comment policy for your consideration in order to provide some level foundation for all those who participate in public meetings. And in this case, the council meetings, as you saw from the recommendation, we're recommending to start with the council and we can look at other bodies. Other cities have adopted such policies over the years. The town has benefited from an informal process for a very, very long time. What we've seen more recently is that as issues are controversial nature, there's some, there's, there's an opportunity here to provide some clarity on what happens at a council meeting, how, how people can speak at a council meeting and the like. We were hearing too, from residents in their experiences over the last year related to public speaking. And some of those ideas made their way into this policy. For instance, on red page 84, item number six, this was an idea that we heard from one resident that other cities, some cities have done this, where you can combine your time, if everyone's there in attendance and have a spokesperson to speak. So the thinking here was that, you know, really, there's this wonderful opportunity to participate in the public process through speaking at a, at a, at a public meeting. And that should be, it should be cherished and it should be promoted. And everyone who wants to come should be able to feel like they can speak there. And that's not always the case. I think that's just the nature of these meetings at times, particularly when we don't have some guidance. So that's what we tried to capture here. The, I don't think there's anything particularly controversial about elements of this, other than the fact it's a little more formal than we've done in the past. And I recognize that, I want to point that out very explicitly. I believe when I first started four years ago, we didn't have a podium. And I think it was one of the things I asked to put in place. And I, I know sometimes I preach these things a bit. But I think that this really does help people, particularly people who don't normally participate in a process. And when you walk in a room and there's 30 people in there, it can be pretty intimidating. So knowing that there's backing of policy can be fairly helpful. And talking with the managers. we thought it made the most sense to recommend that this start at the council level. Should this be something the council wishes to adopt? Then it can be shared with the commissions and the committees. And they're all a little different. They do different things. They have their own styles. But there's a, a basis for a potentially successful similar policy at the commission and committee level, should they wish to do so. The committees have become more involved in a variety of issues that can, that have been controversial in the community. So this could be helpful for them as well. So that's my presentation. Happy, happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. I, I just want to point out Jeremy and staff have done a lot of work on this. I, you know, I think you know, we've handled things very informal here for a long time. And, and I think we still, for the most part, can I, it's just, it's, it's good to have this in place for those times when we really do need to have a little more formal process and when we have bigger crowds for certain things as we, as we have recently. So if there are questions, I see Craig's hand up. We can start with questions on this one. Go, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, so I, I see in the policy that there's a under number eleven, red page eighty-four down at the bottom. The mayor presiding officer can shorten speaking time to two minutes. One thing that might be nice to put in here, but as a, as a, as a rule is that something like by unanimous consent of the council, the time can be extended. I mean, that's been our habit in the past is that if somebody has something to say and they're just a little bit long-winded, we let them go beyond the three-minute mark. I'd like to put that formally into the policy that as long as nobody is objecting, we let people go longer than three minutes. I think that, that would be a way of making it fair and standardizing it so that, you know, somebody doesn't say, well, well, you let somebody else go on for four minutes. Why don't I get four minutes? We can, if we put it in, then it will be fair.
Thank you. Other questions for Jeremy right now? Anne, go ahead.
Jeremy, I know that some of the things that we actually experienced over the last couple of years in the meetings have been, weren't referenced in here. And I'm thinking specifically about the applause. And I can think of one situation where I know one speaker was really, another resident was really intimidated by the applause that, you know, happened around that person, individual. So I wondered about that. And then I think the other thing that I didn't see was the interrupting. We've, you know, it had more of a pattern than I'd ever seen where people would just speak from the audience without being called on by the mayor. And this could be because the mayor may potentially last year didn't see them in time to address them or they were going to speak no matter what. And so I think it's important to potentially add interrupting or interruptions as something where you have the list, you know, not interrupt, you know, because they, we slid, we had a little bit of bad behavior in a couple of different ways, but among them was somebody yelling out something, you know, in the middle of the discussion. And, and again, I think that's really disrespectful to whoever is speaking at the time.
Great. Yeah, I think we can add that in number one and two. Red page eighty-three and eighty-four, but particularly eighty-four, number two. Having an additional bullet point that, or within the second bullet point, calling out applause and interruptions. Certainly helps to have a broader definition.
Yeah, one thing I, I might put some language in there to reflect Anne, your specific concern about applause. Because I think a lot of people think of applause as a positive thing and that it wouldn't, isn't. They don't think that applause, supportive position might be intimidating for other people who aren't in favor of it. And so I think just making it clear to people why we're saying applause, because if you say, please don't applaud it, people say, why not? You know, I'm supportive of stuff that's positive. And so, so I think making it clear to people why it can be damaging, it would be a useful thing to put in there.
Yeah, I agree. There's that reference to cheers and jeers, but I think we should probably make it a little more explicit.
I can modify that, maybe taking a little artistic license there. But I can, I can get a little more direct.
I have one other technical comment on, on item three on red page eighty-four. It says, address disclosure is not required. My understanding is that you also do not need to provide your name. You can be entirely anonymous under the Brown Act, I believe. Kara maybe has, can, can confirm that.
Yes, that's true.
Does the, so as it relates to number three, would, would the council wish us to, would, would like the section to still say, we would like you to say your name?
It's just at the end, it says, address is not required, but name is also not required. Name and address, neither of them are required.
You can just drop that, the phrase in parentheses entirely.
Mary Ann's got her hand up. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Oh, with regard to no clapping, I think it was Steve Tobin who had a really great explanation for why it is not helpful to clap during a meeting. And I think that was when we were serving on the town owned property committee. Do you remember that, Anne?
I do remember that, Mary Ann. And I was thinking of that meeting and plus one of ours in which we, that was definitely an issue.
So if I, I'd be happy to get, I think he even wrote it down. I'd be happy to get that language for you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Okay, we kind of morphed into a discussion here. I'll, I'll ask if anyone from the public wants to comment on this item. Want to raise hands? Okay, I don't see any hands going up. I'll wait another minute. No, no hands. Okay. If, you know, I could, I can entertain more discussion or we could take or, or, you know, actually, we're, we've made, we suggested some changes. Should we perhaps have asked, asked for this to come back revised the next time we, we, next week or the next time we can meet and discuss an item?
Yeah, I think it could probably come back on consent. I think the discussion was fairly straightforward on it.
Okay, that's, that's good too. Any other comments people want to make or, or questions right now?
I'll bring it back next week then, during the special meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you all. That's, that's, that's good. Okay, next up, we're kind of back on, on track here. So we will move on to liaison reports. Anne, if you want to start off?
The only liaison report I had was a regional meeting today with the roundtable where they were introducing with great technical difficulty. Their latest, because they were working remotely. And it was pretty brutal, to be honest. It's the new portal that we're all going to be seeing from the airport on noise. And it, it actually looks like it'll be terrific when it works. It was unfortunately not working too well today. It was a painful, painful meeting. But it is really going to enable people to have real-time data in terms of what's happening and really access the data that heretofore has only been available to roundtable members on a monthly basis or, you know, every other monthly basis. And to segment and dissect and really understand the data in a way that is, is pretty cool. I mean, you can isolate it by types of aircraft, time of the day, altitudes, routes that they're flying. It's, it's, and then layered on it are things like climatic, climatic conditions. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a great system, but I'm not sure quite when that'll be ready. So stay tuned. But so that was the only meeting I had to report on.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, I had no, no reports.
Okay, good.
Um, yeah, I gave the summary already of the, the Calpers meeting earlier. One other thing that I forgot to mention earlier that I remembered halfway through this meeting about Calpers. One of the other impacts that they've not yet accounted for is their private equity investments, obviously. Valuing those. You, you don't know what the value of them is until you go through an exercise. So those will probably be impacted to some degree as well. So the four percent may, may rise a little bit because of the impact on private equity return, on value of those investments. The, the other thing, I don't have a any town-specific committee meetings, but from one thing that stuck out to me on the call today with the elected officials and the county manager was Jackie Spears' report saying that she's expecting that the Congress will pass by unanimous consent probably on Friday or thereabouts. Another, I heard a trillion, Anne, I guess you heard two trillion. Another large amount of money anyway. I heard two hundred and fifty million of that will be to top up the PPP plan. A hundred million for hospitals, a hundred and fifty million for local governments, actually, including the ones that were left out of the original package. So smaller local governments was going to be, I think, part of the target there, Jeremy. So I don't know if you've heard about that. But there may be some funds available there as well. So just, just to bring that to everybody's attention, that there, there does seem to be more federal money on the way. Despite, you know, I think there was some initial discussion about, oh, well, maybe that was enough and we won't do any more attempts. I was surprised actually to hear that. They're ready to do this unanimously as early as Friday.
Yeah. Anne, did you want to comment on that? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just Craig's right. I think that one million was the one that Jackie mentioned today. And I think, but I have heard through another source that they may in fact be considering going beyond that already. So I think it's a stay tuned situation, but it's going to be a lot.
Yeah, and it was, the, the suddenness of it was what caught me by surprise. So if there's another, if they're arguing over, they've agreed on one trillion and they're arguing over another trillion.
Suddenly everyone's a socialist. I have one hand up in the audience. Karen, did you have a quick comment? Karen?
That was just a mistake. I'm sorry.
No worries. Okay. Mary Ann?
Uh, I, other than the county calls, which we're all on, and some of the special calls that I think we've all been doing with the Sequoias, the institutional partners, the committee chairs. The only liaison report I have was a dry run CCG meeting in anticipation of our meeting tomorrow night. And that's it.
Okay. Like the only thing that I will just briefly mention, Jeremy and I were on a call this afternoon with the school, two of the school board members and actually Roberta was not on that call. So the one thing that came up that, and I kind of, I think I, I kind of alluded to it in today's, my, my message today is you know, we were talking about, and it kind of feeds into this idea that we're, we're looking for other kind of community engagement things. And the, it was just that you know, parents with children who are younger are sort of struggling in some cases to find ways to sort of just get contact outside their house. I mean, it's just even when there are classes and things, it's hard. If you've got multiple kids and they're under the age of five, it's just, they're just, you're just, you know, you're, you're just trying to keep them from falling downstairs and things. So we were, so that was where, so the, the, I, I made a sort of point of it in the message today. And that was kind of where that came from, was just talking to the, to, to the board members. And they're just, you know, the schools likely to, it, it sounds like at this point, I think the instruction is probably not going to happen in, in class until, again, for the, until the end of the year.
Formerly been canceled countywide, so.
Yeah, I think that was formally announced. And so they're just, they're just keep, continuing to work for, on distance learning. And, you know, I'm just sort of looking for more, what else? We could just maybe not necessarily offer ourselves, but maybe sort of just help people if they want to initiate more groups like that, you know, like, you know, groups with common interests want to get together. I mean, we could even if we needed to provide a Zoom facility or something like that. But it's just something to think about going forward. It's just more, more things that would be helpful, just because people are, or people are struggling sometimes to, you know, just, just have some contact outside their house. So that's the one thing I had. We can move on then to the manager report, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor Als. So a few things. Right before this meeting, I listened to mid Peninsula regional open space district special meeting on their wildfire vegetation management plan. What I heard and what one other person I know who participated in the meeting heard was somewhat disappointing that they have a great plan, but they're not planning to do some of the work until the winter of twenty twenty-one, including some of the work at Windy Hill. So more to come on that, but that's what we heard. The, as the staff moves into more of a regular schedule and less COVID, one of the areas that we're spending some time on is some of the policy work that we've been interested in doing for some time. Taylor and Brandy, they've been looking at ways to improve our facility management and rental of our properties and the like. So that's, that's a a chunk of work that we're going to be looking at in, in the coming months. And we'll obviously bring it through the appropriate committees as needed. A couple issues in town. Unfortunately, we've seen an increase in some trespassing into the creek at the Georgia Land Grove Bridge. Fortunately, there's been a number of police reports associated with this. And having read the police reports, there's been trespassing signage damaged. I think a web camera on private property was stolen. So we've, I think you all know that we've been working with the homeowners on this issue. And certainly understand their frustrations that people were going to the creek under the bridge. And, and at one point there were some, there's graffiti that was on rocks a little bit farther down the creek. People are trespassing into private property. There's a portion of the area next to the creek that is our property that we've been considering what we can do to, to limit some exposure to the private property owners. As a short-term measure, I asked Howard today to put some barriers up and just say that this, you're trespassing. So it's, I think frustrating for the homeowners that this is occurring. And certainly the, the property damage that's occurred is, is, is difficult. You may, this was an issue came up today and you may hear from residents on this. There's been some vegetation management work that's been happening in Blue Oaks that's visible from particularly the ranch that caused some concern amongst ranch residents. So we're working closely. We understand it's a vegetation management program that's being guided by the Woodside Fire Protection District as part of the vegetation management plan for the Blue Oak subdivision. So right now, I don't know that there's any issue for us to work on, but it is certainly visible. Talking to the fire marshal, there was some particularly high brush, seven feet and taller in that area. Its removal does, as I said, is visible. It's work that should have been happening for a long time. It hadn't been in the previous fire marshal been on Blue Oaks to do it. So we'll be responding to residents in the next day related to that. There's some erosion control stuff that we're likely going to have to get involved with. But otherwise, it appears to be work that would normally occur. It's just because it's not been worked on for a long time. It's, it's more apparent. The final thing mentioned is that Captain Corpus is looking to, oh, Craig?
Yeah, just on the, on the brush clearing, that's been happening during the shelter in place. And presumably that would then be an exception because it's a public safety. It's not landscaping. It's
Yeah, under the auspices of the, of the fire protection, fire protection district on a plan that's been adopted by, by the area. So that's, that's allowed. Captain Corpus is looking to do a virtual coffee. Similar to the one that the mayor did last week. She's thinking about doing it next week. She invited the chief, Rob Linder, to participate in, also the mayor. It hasn't been quite finalized yet, but we're thinking the fourteenth, so just FYI. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy on that one? Okay, then we'll go on to digest March twenty-seventh. Nothing? Okay. April second. Okay, if there's no comments on any of the digest items, then I think we're done.
Okay, thank you all.
All right.
On the video meeting, I think it was successful.
Every, every week. Every, every week.
Nice to see.
Every time, we're actually making records on this. So, yeah, thank you all.
John, John, you sort of disappeared at one point in the background. It was a little creepy.
You disappear through the hill.
Kind of like this. Did you see my cat walk across the computer?
No, they're actually pretty good, pretty good at filtering that out.
Well, but it's between me and the screen, so I, you couldn't see me either at that point. I guess it wasn't, I guess it wasn't that disruptive. I do apologize for eating my dinner during the meeting. Our food didn't get here until like 6:50, so I was like, I couldn't, I couldn't wait. All right, yeah, I think this, I think, I don't know. I'm getting, I'm feeling more comfortable with this. I hope you all are as well, so.
Good night.
Okay, thanks everyone.
Good night.